We welcome those who are joining us in person and those who are remote. And just before we start, and start with the prayers, certainly we'd like to ask everyone for their thoughts and prayers for our colleague, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin and her family during this difficult, difficult time. So I ask that you please keep her in your prayers. At this time, we'll ask that Pastor Behringer, the Hope Mills Presbyterian Church, if he would, come to the podium and give us our invocation. Ask that all would rise for the prayer. Immediately following, if we could stay standing and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, Pastor.
Evening, Mr. Mayor. And good evening, council members and guests. Let us bow our heads, if you would please, for our invocation. Our Father, we thank you for this another opportunity to come together for the purpose of discussing the business of our great All-America city and its surrounding communities. To this end, we invite your presence here among us. We ask your blessings upon our mayor and city council members. I pray that you would give them the wisdom, the guidance, and the knowledge to make the harder right decisions over the easier wrong ones. Because we know that right is right if nobody's doing it and wrong is still wrong if everybody's doing it. And we know too, in this day and in this age, when our principles, values, and morals have all been thrown to the wind, it's not always easy to stand in the gap and to do the right thing. And so I would ask, oh Lord, to grant unto our mayor and council members courage in the face of consternation, confidence in the midst of confusion, and composure when confronted with uncertainty. And now for this hour, I would simply ask, grant us wisdom, grant us courage for the facing of this hour. For the facing of this hour. And Lord, we would dare not close without remembering our councilwoman Banks McLaughlin and her family. Father, be very close to them during this time. Speak to their hearts. Do for them what they cannot do for themselves and grant them your peace, which passes all understanding. We make this prayer inclusive for all and everyone here and we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
... States of America and to the Republic where it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you for a wonderful prayer. You would like to take just a moment and tell us a little bit about yourself and your church, your ministry?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I deeply appreciate that. I served in the Army twenty years as a chaplain. And then whenever I retired, I went to the United States Soldiers and Airmen's Home in Washington, DC as the Director of Ministry and Pastoral Care and then transferred to the Fayetteville VA Medical Center as the Chief of Chaplain Services. And since then, I've served at about fifteen different churches as the interim or as the supply. And currently, I'm serving with Rogers and Breeze Funeral Home as their chaplain. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here.
Yes, sir.
I'll bless you all.
Thank you so much. Counselor, at this time, as we have our announcements, the city of Fayetteville has been recognized. Mr. Manager, do you want to read this and brag on your team a little bit? Government Finance Officers Association?
Yes, sir. This is also a proud moment for our budget and evaluation staff. But the city of Fayetteville has been recognized by the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA, for outstanding budgeting presentation. The city's Budget and Evaluation Office recently received notification of receipt of the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the annual budget adopted in June. In order to receive the award, the city had to meet nationally-recognized guidelines for a budget document that serves as a policy roadmap, as well as a financial plan and operational guide. If we... Was there actually a present, a plaque? We have not received that yet, Mayor, but we do anticipate receiving a plaque that we'll be able to proudly display at City Hall as well of this accomplishment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, and thank you to the Budget and Finance Team for a great job. At this time, as we move, counsel to city manager's report. Mr. Manager? Nothing else? Okay. All right, counsel, moving to...
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. If everyone was interested, could join us tomorrow for the Bill Crisp Senior Center ribbon-cutting and dedication in honor of former councilmember Bill Crisp. At last week's tennis groundbreaking, we made a promise to the community that we would be building quality projects. And first of that, I think, as you're going to see, is an actual construction project that we've done. We've done, of course, splash pads and things like that, but it's going to knock your socks off. You're going to be very pleased tomorrow with what we've been able to achieve on behalf of the citizens of Fayetteville.
And that is at 10:00 AM tomorrow at the new Bill Crisp Center out west Fayetteville off of Remro? Right beside Beauty Spot Church?
Right beside Beauty Spot. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So look forward to that. All right, item 6.0 is approved of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Councilmember England.
So sorry. Thank you. I had an announcement. I wanted to briefly highlight the exciting news that Fayetteville State recently shared. They will introduce a new Chick-fil-A, Stanley's Chick-fil-A, and also a Starbucks, which will be coming to our Murchison Road area Fayetteville State corridor in addition to the renaming of Bronco Square, which is now named Bronco Midtown. So we are very excited that they are joining forces with the city and county to help revitalize the Murchison and Bragg Boulevard corridor and thank them so much for the developments that they are making at Fayetteville State University.
Thank you, Councilmember Mayor. Congratulations again to the Broncos, Bronco pride for sure. Item 6.0 is approved of the agenda. And counsel, is everyone logged into the iPads? We'll tip the work through that. All right, we all got connections, so we'll vote through the iPads. Jennifer, are you tracking? All right. So it's a motion by Mayor Protem to approve the agenda, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Any discussion on the motion? All right, counsel, I'll look to you for votes on the Dawkins-Jensen motion to approve the agenda. All right. It's unanimous by those voting? All right. Counsel, we'll move down to items of consent. If we could, use an iPad. If I have a motion for consent. Let's see.
Mayor, Councilmember Mahndras to move, and seconded by Mayor Protem Dawkins to approve.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Mahndras to approve, seconded by Mayor Protem. Any discussion on the motion to approve? All right, counsel, look to you for your votes on the iPad. All right. Adam Clark, that is unanimous by those voting. All right. Moving right along to staff reports. Item 8.01 is the Murchison Road Choice Neighborhood Update. Mr. Manager?
Yes, I was Chris Colley for TARS. Okay. Well, while we're waiting for them to come in, Mayor, if we could, if I could ask the Budget and Evaluation Staff to stand, just so you have an opportunity to see them as well for the GFOA. Budget staff, if you could stand? Thank you all.
Very important. They control the money. All right, Mr. Colley, how are you, sir?
All right, sorry about that. Apparently, we're delayed in the next room from the filming, so, sorry.
All right. No problem.
And it's going to be one more moment because it's not in the shared drive, so, sorry. All right, very sorry about that. Now we're ready to roll. So today, we wanted to come back and talk to you. Last time we talked about Murchison Choice was in March of this year. We're getting pretty close to some significant timelines and milestones. So we wanted to come back and talk about that, along with a partnership with the Housing Authority and another local nonprofit to help make some of our transformation plans a reality and then give you an update on some of our early action projects and where those are. So just a reminder, I know we've got some new folks on council as well. So the Choice Neighborhood Program is a comprehensive approach to neighborhood transformation. For Fayetteville, this is a transformational way to engage and invest in our redevelopment areas. Back in 2020, the city was one of eleven competitive awards nationally who won the Transformation Planning Grant. That was a grant for $450,000. The city and the Housing Authority also pledged additional resources to help make it a reality. Current residents will be able to benefit from the transformation by preserving the affordable housing. So what that means is that any public housing resident who gets displaced through this process will have that initial right to return to the new housing development that is created. There's three core goals of the Choice Neighborhood Plan, which is housing. The aim is to transform distressed public housing into mixed-income housing that is physical and financially viable. People, to support positive outcomes for families who live in the surrounding neighborhood. And neighborhoods, to transform distressed communities into viable mixed-income neighborhoods. So just to remind everybody, a map of the Choice Neighborhood, it essentially starts right at downtown, kind of that terminus for Murchison Road, and goes all the way up to Country Club and Pamela Lee. And it kind of follows Cross Creek and Little Cross Creek as natural boundaries to create that neighborhood. It includes several assets. First off is Fayetteville State University, Smith Rec. There's a couple of high schools, E. Smith High School, and then Ferguson-Easily Elementary is right there. And then you can see down, we've got West Area Elementary, which is just right at the edge of it. And then you'll also see the Murchison Townhomes location, which is down towards Country Club. So just to point out some of the great work that our team has done recently. So we've had a couple of different community resource fairs and then career fairs. Been partnering with NC Works and Fayetteville FTCC. So last October, so a year ago, we had ten folks show up to it. Had a lot of work and passion went into it. It was a little disappointing. Then in May, we had sixty-six folks come. We felt pretty great and we were pretty happy that we had had more than six times as many people come. Then in September, we had two-hundred-and-seventy-three people come to the event. And I just got to say, the folks at FTCC and NC Works, along with our team, who did the marketing and outreach of that, if you were a marketing company and I showed you ten to two-hundred-and-seventy-three in a year, that's a pretty good return. So we're really excited to use our neighborhood engagement team to do more events and more partnerships like this in the future, not just in the Murchison Road area, but in all of our redevelopment areas. So there were some overarching themes that came out of the Choice Planning Grant thus far. We went through these with working groups with the community. We've got community ambassadors who are actually working for me. And then we've also had a lot of steering committees with nonprofits, business leaders, real estate companies, things like that. So in general, the three themes that we came up with were that growing green, so creating those viable spaces for people to live in a neighborhood that they like, but also building the economic resources and that infrastructure in the community. A perfect example of that growing green pace place is that FSU's Business and Innovation Hub that just opened up. We've also talked about a community of learning, so embracing Fayetteville State University as an anchor institution in that area and what that brings to create and help create the identity of Murchison Road and that community there. We've also looked at the historical and cultural context. We've actually came across some really cool stories through all of this, a tie to a famous rock and roll hall of famer, Solomon Burke. We've also come across a couple of things where we've seen that Mount Sinai, Fayetteville State University, and the NAACP, which is located on Murchison Road, were really kind of that central focal point and igniting of the Civil Rights marches here in Fayetteville. And actually had a lot to do with integrating Hay Street a year before the Civil Rights Act was passed in sixty-four. They did that in sixty-three. So we want to celebrate all of those things through anything that we do in this community. So from a timeline piece right now, we started out in the first year, listening and learning, talking to a lot of folks, including community leaders and city council. Then we started creating vision for the future and coming up with those early action projects that we were going to do throughout this process. We created working groups and came up with strategies that they could really sink their teeth into and work towards measurable outcomes. Then we started drafting those plans for the people, housing, and neighborhood elements. We just finished our draft plan that went to HUD. They came back and asked us to tweak a couple of things. We had this really big meeting at Fayetteville State University where we showed that draft plan and went over it with the community. And now we're working towards that final plan. And so some of those parts and pieces are what I'm asking council to look at tonight, and we'll go through that a little bit. So we're finalizing those pieces. We've got environmental engineers out doing studies on some pieces of property right now. We've got architects out doing renderings with the Housing Authority on what mixed-income communities could look like. We've, we're in the process of recruiting a master developer. That person will work with the Housing Authority on any new construction and revitalization. We've done a market study that not only did we do the commercial, or the residential, which was required by the grant, but the city also put in a little bit more money to do a commercial market study for the area so that we could look at this revitalization plan, not just from a residential focus, but from an economic development focus as well. And then we've done several early action projects, which we'll talk about a little bit more. The picture on the bottom left is a picture from that, that career fair that we talked about. And you can see the turnout there and lots of different folks. So one of the items that I'm asking council to look at today is to sign on for a memorandum of understanding. So we'll talk about how that's going to work and why that's needed. But first up, the partners involved in this memorandum of understanding is some folks that I'm going to kind of introduce you to a little bit. So over on Elliott Circle, the Elliott Properties is owned by a nonprofit called the North Carolina Indian Housing Authority. Now, they're not a housing authority. They're in name only. Back in the late seventies, early eighties, the federal government changed some rules. They went from being a statewide housing authority to just being a nonprofit, doing their best to provide affordable housing in our, in our community and around. I'm sure most of you are familiar with Elliott Circle. It's one of the areas that it's really suffered from disinvestment. There's a real opportunity here to partner with them. And then the second partner is, of course, the Housing Authority itself. And so we've met with the Elliott Circle Properties folks, and we've talked to them about the Choice Neighborhood, the potential for an implementation grant, and what that could mean for their property and for the neighborhood at large. So as part of our housing plan, we've kind of phased in what that work would look like. So Phase One would be redevelopment of the Murchison Townhome site, and we'll look at a couple of concepts here in just a second. Phase Two would be the redevelopment of the Elliott Property Site. Phase Three would be some more kind of single-family homeownership-type projects at the Elliott Property Site. So we didn't arrive at this plan easily or overnight. We looked at seven different sites throughout this area. Some that city council sent us, that they had constituents that said, hey, I'd like for you to look at my property as being part of the future of this corridor. Eventually, we landed on these two because there's a real synergy here. All-in, Elliott Properties has one-hundred-and-ten units, Murchison Townhomes has sixty. And so we think we can, we can really add a lot of kind of improved housing units along with the additional units that would be provided in this area. So I mentioned that, that market study that we looked at. So it said that there's about two-hundred-and-forty to four-hundred-and-forty affordable and market-rate rental units in the next five years and then sixty-four sell homes in the next five years. Now, we've had some folks locally look at that market study that was done by an economist. And not to knock the economist in any way, but we've had a couple of affordable housing developers, a couple of market-rate developers look at, look at the study. And they think that he was probably being a little on the conservative side. I think most of us who either own property or have tried to rent in the past couple of years know that there is definitely a market for rental and for homeownership here in Fayetteville. As we mentioned, this, this MOU that we're asking council to approve tonight is a tri-party agreement between the Housing Authority, the North Carolina Indian Housing Authority, and the city of Fayetteville. And right now, we're not getting into specifics of how it'll work. That all would come with the actual implementation grant that we'll be applying for in the future. Right now, we're just asking these three entities to pledge to work together on an implementation, implementation plan if we get awarded that large grant. So talking about a couple of the sites real quick. So this is the Murchison Townhouse site. It's a largely linear site. And so what you can see here right now is this is, this is a very conservative approach to the site. And so this has on it, you know, a kind of a reconfiguration of the townhouse and duplex kind of model that that site already has on it now, along with some garden-style apartments towards the front. Now ideally, you can just look at this site and see that there might be some opportunities to acquire some additional property to expand that site and also to have a larger presence on the corridor. Because if you look at what we've done with some of our newer developments in the past couple of years, with the, with the public housing particularly, we've made some really attractive developments and they have really helped to bring a different look to some of the communities. So on Elliott Circle, you can see, we would be taking that from one-hundred-and-ten units to two-hundred-and-seven units. They would be also adding community amenities and green space that's not there right now. There's a lot of garden-style apartments towards the back. There's also a community center towards Murchison Road. And then there's a mix of townhouses, duplexes, and then ultimately, single-family lots for sale. So I want to pause right here. This is the MOU piece. Make sure that, if that's okay, Mayor, to make sure we can wrap our heads around the MOU, and then we'll move on to the early action projects.
All right. Thank you. I think everybody's really excited. I know Councilmember Herr has, has his light on, but I think it's, it's after whatever you need to pass out, so keep, keep moving.
All right, we'll keep going. Yep. All right. So we've done a couple of early action projects so far, most notably, the little free libraries. That, that made a bigger splash than we could have anticipated, honestly. It was, it was really cool to be able to put those out. And it's been really cool to see communities and businesses adopt those little free libraries to continually stock them. And we are putting books out in those, at least until the end of the grant, to make sure they really are the community's boxes at this point, but we want to ensure success. And it is really cool to go out there with a load of books and see seven or eight kids standing around as you load them in there. They're going to take them right back out. I pop by a couple of them as I drive by, and people are putting new books in and taking books out, and it's, it's just, it's really cool. We also have a community garden project we're working on with Tony Brown, who is the Executive Director and President of Southern CC, Inc. It is called the You, Me, and Us Holistic Community Garden. So this is right off of Murchison Road, Allen Stackpole in Springfield. So if you go down Murchison Road and you get to, what is the name of that place? Stedman Wade Clinic and the Jamaican Kitchen, it's right down there, and you can go check it out. He's got a lot of really cool events. I'm pretty sure he's having a Halloween deal this weekend for kids. So that would be pretty cool as well. So we've, we've granted $50,000 for that project. This is the first time the city's ever really kind of done something like this. And so we've asked them to be patient with us, and we're getting pretty close to having a final contract so that we can go out there. And what we're going to help on that project is with actually building the raised beds for the community garden. So that's going to be really cool. We've been working with the Housing Authority... We've been working with the Housing Authority and our IT department on providing free Wi-Fi to all community residents at Murchison Town Homes. Now, this will be kind of like what we provide at rec centers already, so it's a broadcast Wi-Fi signal that they can connect to. There will definitely be a benefit to having their own residential high-speed connection for, you know, playing computer games or streaming high qual-, you know, HDTV and things like that. But the idea is this Wi-Fi will help people have computer access where they didn't before. During COVID, we saw the school board park school buses out at sites like this, and once this project goes live, we will no longer have to do something like that. This will actually be provided free of charge to the residents. Then, the next one is the Gateway Improvements, which is another one that I need council's action on in order to move forward. So we'd like to take what's left of this early action money and begin kind of giving a makeover to the MLK Bridge at the southern portion of Murchison Road. You can see kind of conceptually up here, we've got a recognition of the Choice Neighborhood Project and Murchison Neighborhood, and then we've also got another side that's more, more aimed towards FSU and Bronco Pride and things like that. Now, these aren't the final renderings right here, this is conceptually what we're looking at, but we, we are having folks from FSU's Design School actually look at this to see how we can incorporate it. I will say, before we dive into the bridges, though, I think this is where we want to stop for a second and chat, is that the HUD folks were pretty clear that I couldn't dedicate the entire bridge to FSU. I had to make sure that we had representation for our Choice Neighborhood as well. And so this is the compromise that we made with the HUD folks. And so next up will be the council action, where I'm, I'm asking you to authorize the MOU and the Gateway Improvement Resolution to DOT, but I'll leave it on the early action one if that's where some of our questions might lie.
All right. I appreciate it, Mr. Colley, and I'm glad to hear you, hear you say these were just, just renderings about the concept of it. That's phenomenal. I think I had, Councilmember here had clicked for a motion, but I also saw Councilmember Ingram who could possibly be a second unless she had a question.
Yes, sir. No, I just wanted to make a, a couple of comments, but yes, it was about the motion, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
So Councilmember here, when you have your question, before you make your motion, I need to go to Councilmember Jensen, she has a question.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay. For one thing, it always is a great thumbs up to have community support, which we have had for years, and now they are coming more and more in the light. So I was glad to hear about that. Of course, Tony Brown and his garden thing, I really, really do like that, and the support that we're planning or love to move forward with Elliot Circle with the Indian community, even when they first came in and did their improvement, it was a great improvement from where it was at that time. So it's a big thumbs up to them. The Gateway Improvement, you spoke on, and I think this is probably be something I would be discussing during the retreat, so I probably won't get into that tonight. It might be out of the spectrum of your thought. A Rosemary Place, which is the street that the apartments are owned, and I think it's a big thumbs up support for us doing that improvement. There was a concern at one time with if DOT was going to put an extension there through there out to, I'm not sure where it was going to come out to, maybe, I can't even remember the, the street there.
Kane Road?
I don't know if it was Kane Road, but whatever, that first street, Commonwealth, and maybe possibly Kane Road. Is that discussion something that's still going on? Because I know that it was a concern when it, when we start thinking about funding and resources.
You know, I took that slide out, and now I wish I'd have kept it in here. So, so that was a very good example of where, where we went in this past 18, 19 months with this Choice Neighborhood Initiative, right? Is DOT came in and some planners had looked at a map, much like the one that's in front of you right now, and said, you know, look at that Big MB Lot right there, that'd be a great place for a road, except for it goes right in the middle of this, this community that we're working with, right?
Right, right, right.
And so several council members let DOT know their feelings on it, along with the community and the Housing Authority, all had separate meetings with DOT to talk about this. And ultimately, they, they decided to put in a more traditional intersection and not, not come through this neighborhood right here.
I totally agree. I totally agree.
But, you know, that's a perfect example of, you know, that's why DOT's process is the way it is, that's why they come to council and propose these things, but that's also a part of what we, as the Choice Neighborhood team, put first and foremost in this effort, was having that community engagement and involvement in decision-making. So there will still be improvements to Murchison Road going all the way down to, pretty close to Kingdom Impact Global Ministry, but it will not involve changing that intersection to run through this neighborhood.
But when, when we had our Gateway, Gateway Corridor Committee together, we had a lot of discussions about, and the members that are, that are here, or at least that were a part of that committee, we talked about what that underpass there, right here, and what it would look like. We had those major discussions back and forth. Are you all looking at any of those notes, or are you just starting completely over from scratch?
I wasn't aware that this particular bridge was one of those conversations, so we'll make sure we look at those notes. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
And Councilmember here, Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Colley, for this report. It's a great report. So I'm going to go back and kind of piggyback off of what Councilmember here is talking about. So I, I am the new chair of the Gateways and Corridors Committee, along with Councilmember Benevente and Councilmember McNair, and we were discussing a few things, and you have brought a lot of light to us. So what I am asking for is, so those of you that know me know that when I'm looking at this bridge, I think we can do so much better. We can do, I know it's just a concept, but I think that we have talked for many of years about how, how big and how it needs to make a statement, you know, that of going into that corridor. So what I'm asking for is that we are going to be meeting in the next week or two, that we could be part of this and maybe bring Fayetteville State involved in it, and maybe some of our delegation, because I, I see a lot more going into Fayetteville State than just this. I see lights. I see lots of things. So, thank you. I just wanted it on the record.
Yeah, and I will add to that, because I see a really good point, that, you know, as we've looked at this and got to know our DOT folks a little bit better, we, we shied away from some of those physical improvements due to the nature and the timeliness of this grant. That, that absolutely does not mean that the community, economic community department wouldn't want to go down that road as well.
Absolutely. It could be a great collaboration to make good things happen. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Ready?
All right. Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, I have some questions that's predicated on the trip that we took to Newport News on their Choice Neighborhood incentive. And let me give you two of them, they're all about collaboration, because that was the word that they emphasized the whole two days, the whole two days that we were there. One is, how would we can get outdoor people to sponsor the Choice Neighborhood incentive program? I.e., they came across an abandoned building that was next to a building that they hadn't renovated. They got a private company to donate the money to purchase that building, and then got, I believe it was Old Dominion University, to help them renovate the building. Two is, how do we go to help the individuals who have records, low income, to be able to afford that housing? What they're doing now is they have lawyers who are volunteering their time to help them clean up their records so they can afford these houses. If we can start the collaboration process now, once it's complete, it'd be a lot easier for the residents. So just go in to tell me how we going about doing it.
Yes, sir. And, and I'm glad you brought up your trip. I debated putting that in the presentation, but I, I thought I'd give the opportunity for council members to share their, their stuff up here. You know, I, I will say, one of the striking things with our counterparts in Virginia is that they, they completed their transformation plan about six or so years ago, and so they've had six years of traction to get to the point they are, where they've won a competitive, nationally competitive grant for tens of millions of dollars, they award three to four a year. So you, you've got to have some significant skin in the game to be competitive. I think as a community, we are incredibly competitive, but those next couple of years, as we get ready to apply, or we apply several times and learn from that and iterate better, those partnerships, those investments, those concrete plans need, need to materialize. You know, one of the things is that we, we do have some folks who are working on expungement here in Cumberland County, and so bringing those folks to the table that are already doing that work and saying, hey, let's shift our focus and prioritize on some of these folks that are in low-income housing, that may not be able to, because of criminal records and histories, be able to move into these newly renovated units. So how do we help them with some of those, especially, you know, small possession charges and things that should be expunged and could be? How do we connect those clinics? But that's exactly the point. I cannot underscore enough how getting a $30 to $50 million grant brings people to the table. You start having national best practice leaders in community development show up knocking on your door. And so there's a lot of work, I guess I say all that to say that there's a lot of work to be done between now and December or January when we submit for the transformation plan. There's a lot of work to be done in the following year when we get ready for the big grant, the implementation grant, and there's a lot to be learned in the journey until we do successfully win one of those grants. Regardless of Choice Neighborhoods or not, I feel my job as your Economic Community Development Director is to help understand and create those connections with agencies. And so we, we help fund the Reentry Council, for example, which is all about folks coming directly out of prison, and they get out and they've got nothing. They don't have a plan, they don't have job skills, got a couple bucks. And so how do we take those folks and move them forward and help them be successful? But those are really good points about partnerships. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, can I just add one more thing? Their guest speaker for the entire event was a young lady, I think had three kids, who had a criminal background. She moved into the Choice Neighborhood Incentive Program. Now she's in the process of buying her own home. That's what we were trying to do for these type of communities, not just have some place for them to stay, but for them to advance in having their own. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Councilmember, Councilmember Ingram, did you have a question or yours was a motion?
No, Mr. Mayor, I was ready for a motion.
Okay. Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Colley, just because you mentioned that you gave room for councilmembers who went on that trip to Newport News to share, my biggest takeaway, in addition to everything that Councilmember Thompson had mentioned, was the consistent and persistent inclusion of community members throughout the entire process, whether it was design phase, implementation phase. They had an advisory board, many of whom came from sort of their version of the ambassadors that we had. So I was really excited to see that not only were the councilmembers very happy about our trip, but we brought folks like Ms. Cynthia Leaks and Ms. Jeanette Henderson, who have been ambassadors for this process thus far, great and greatly excited to see that we should be and ought to be, and I hope we plan to be, including them throughout this entire process, once we get to the second phase and sort of the bigger grant phases, that we're always including those voices, because generally with, with items like this, words like gentrification get thrown around, we want to be very sensitive and, and aware of that. So the more that we include community voices throughout this process, I think we're going to succeed just as well as Newport News did.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember here.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we receive staff's report and authorize the housing plan of the MO, MOU, as well as the Gateway Improvement Resolution.
As a motion by Councilmember here, second by Councilmember Ingram, discussion on the motion. All right, council, look to your iPads for your votes. Come back to it. What was I saying? Request. You got to go down to that item. Eight-point item. All right. All right, council, like we, iPads were working too good, so show of hand.
Yeah, she, she can't, she didn't, she wasn't here.
All right. All right. Madam Clerk, this unanimous motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Colley, good work.
Thank you, Council.
To what's, oh, I did have a question. Have you, have we submitted the grant request? Because I know there's some discussion about whether we do it this year, next year, but has it been submitted?
So we're still in the planning phase, working on the transformation plan. That is due at the end of this year. The implementation grant is due about two weeks later. So we've looked at that as a team with the Housing Authority, with our consultant, and this is not this year. So next year, not this year. So next, next year, when they put out the, we will be ready.
Yeah, why, why is it not this year?
Because there's, there's, the transformation plan is, is probably 40 to 50% of the grant application, and so our job right now is to get the transformation plan finished by December, by the end of December. So we will be finishing that phase when it's time for the grants to be due.
And Mr. Mayor, if you, Chris, if you could explain as well, Newport News, the length of time between their transformation grant and the actual application?
Yeah, I mean, they, they applied several times before they got it, so it was several years along, but nevertheless, we, you know, we've looked at this with the Housing Authority. We really challenged the Housing Authority and our consultant to say, what can we do to get this done? And it's, it's not feasible to, to apply a couple of weeks after we finish the transformation plan. There's, there's work to be done.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the concern was, there's a lot of additional money that was in the, in the system, more than ordinary, like because of the federal stimulus dollars, and a lot of that housing and, and community redevelopment was a part of that. Is anything jeopardized by waiting to the next budget year? Because I'm sure you had more people applying, so how do we get behind schedule? I'm not, I'm not necessarily saying the success of reapplying and reapplying, I'm saying applying in the first place. I know you're saying you didn't have it where it is, but how is it, we're, we're, we're in this position that we're, we're going to miss this window?
So I don't think the project teams ever really intended to apply immediately upon completion. It was get the transformation plan done, put parts and pieces in place, and then apply. Part of the challenge here, though, is that COVID delayed the award notifications, and so we got our award in December, and that means that our due date is in December. And then they put out the Notice of Funding Availability, and the grants are due in January. And so the turnaround time there is kind of compressed, because instead of starting in, in like the summer or in, in October, we, we started in December. So we've really shifted to that two-year process, and we are on time for that, that two-year planning process.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, no, I was going to add, in relation to submitting the, the grant, based off of what I learned on the Newport News trip, I know it was councilmembers, myself, Benevente and Thompson, you want to make sure you have, you have a good plan. You want to make sure that is robust, and so in terms of not making this round, I, based off of what we learned, it's okay, in my pers-, in my perspective, based off what we learned on the trip. And so, and I hope that helps, probably doesn't, but I just wanted to at least offer that, based off of what we learned and how detailed and how much work they have to go in to actually work on the plan and submit, I, I think we're still good.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor. All right. Now we'll move into the public hearings. My language, it keeps changing. All right. Individuals designed to speak at the public hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before 7:00 PM this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement. Single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire 15 minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, clearly state your name and address for the record, and you may then address the city council. When the light changes from green to amber, that means you have 30 seconds. At the end of your allotted time, you'll be notified that your time is expired. So at this time, I'll give way to you. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Heather Eckhart. I'm a Planner Two in Development Services. This is Agenda Item 9.01, Case P22-30. It's for a property located on Rayford Road between Clifdel Road and Hoak Loop Road. The applicant is Charles Morris for the owner, Robert Gregory Family, LLC. Their request is to rezone a portion of 27 acres, 5.91 acres to be exact, from MR5 to LC, and this property is located in District Eight with a recommendation of approval from city, or from zoning commission. The area highlighted in yellow is the section up for discussion tonight, again with Clifdel Road to the east and Hoak Loop Road to the west. The large building... The large building right here is gonna be Alpha Academy and then Tractor Supply closer to Rayford Road, and then West Park Apartments to the west. As you can see, the property is currently split zoned. The area in pink is LC. This portion was rezoned back in twenty twenty. Uh, the applicant's requesting to rezone again from MR five to LC with the intent to then subdivide the property in the future for potential sale. Future land use plan calls for this to be developed as high-density residential. However, it is immediately adjacent to area designated to be community center. Again, that is the area that holds, uh, Tractor Supply and some other shopping centers, as well as Alpha Academy located in the blue. Subject property is currently undeveloped. To the north, you have a residential subdivision. There is some retaining ponds in between. To the west, again, some apartments. To the south, some apartments are currently under construction. And to the east, Jersey Mike's and Harold's Body Shop. The site plan here shows the area to be rezoned and their future plans for subdivision. Zoning Commission and professional planning staff have recommended approval of the rezoning. While the future land use plan does call for high-density residential, staff opinion that higher-density development is also appropriate because there are similarly zoned properties adjacent to this, and that an amendment to the future land use plan would be appropriate. Staff asks that you hold any questions until after the public hearing.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. So with that, I'll open the public hearing on this item. Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
Now, we have one speaker for this item, Mr. Charles Morris, speaking in favor.
All right. Good evening, sir.
Good eve- good evening. Thank y'all for hearing our case. Um, the, um, if we could, can we, can we throw one of those maps back up there? That one right there? That's fine. Yeah. Um, basically, this property is part of the Gregory, um, Family, L L L P, um, and we've been, uh, trying to work with this property for several years. And, um, with the, uh, continuation of some of the commercial development, uh, we rezoned part of this twenty-six acre parcel to LC, uh, a few years ago, and then we have a potential, um, client that, that wanted the additional piece zoned to be the same, which we felt was very appropriate. The neighborhood behind the property, um, is a single-family residential neighborhood, but it is buffered by this property by two retention ponds. Uh, and then to the, um, uh, east of the property is Alpha Academy, and, and I've spoken multiple times with, uh, Mr. Slocum regarding the school and any concerns he may have. And then on the other side, um, a little bit further away, is an apartment complex owned by Cavanaugh and Cates. We've just had no opposition, uh, and we feel like this property is, um, in the best interest of the community and also the tax base, and therefore, we would ask y'all support the staff recommendation regarding this rezoning.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Now, we have no further speakers.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So that will, will close the, uh, public hearing. Council, uh, any questions on this particular item? Uh, let's see, trying to get to this iPad here. I don't see that. Uh, Ms. Ayers, you, okay, uh, there's a motion by, uh, Councilmember Hondros. All right, is there a second?
Thompson.
Thompson. All right. So the motion by Councilmember Hondros, seconded by Councilmember Thompson. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes on this. Show of hands.
I'm, I'm working.
Is, get back working. All right. All right, let's try to vote on the iPad. These wheels working, D?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right. Madam Clerk, motion carries, nine to oh. Uh, item nine point zero-two.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Good evening, sir.
Uh, for those who don't know me, my name's Craig Harmon. I'm one of the senior planners with the Development Services Department here in Fayetteville. Let's see. And the first case that I have before you this evening is P twenty-two thirty-three. Uh, the applicant is Lori Epler from Larry King and Associates. Palmer Williams is the owner. Uh, the request is to go from an agricultural residential, uh, zoning to a limited commercial. Property is located at the intersection of Rayford and Hope Loop Road, uh, in the northwest corner. Uh, it's a little under two acres. This is in, uh, Councilwoman McGo- Banks McLaughlin's district, and the zoning commission, uh, did unanimously recommend approval. Just to give you an idea again, it's at northwest corner of Rayford and Hope Loop Road. And you'll see in a moment, it's actually just this small area, uh, down in the bottom that is up for rezoning. Uh, it's just this area here that is currently still AR. Uh, a lot of the other property was already rezoned a few years ago to LC. Uh, I think the applicant will explain that, uh, at that time, they weren't sure if they could actually get a building site on this lower end. There's a lot of topographic issues there, uh, but I believe they've, they've found a way to, to make use of that property now, so they're coming back through for the rezoning of, of this corner piece. Our land use plan calls for a neighborhood mixed use, uh, in this area. And this is, again, this is the area that's actually under review tonight for the rezoning. It's just this small, uh, just under two-acre piece right at the corner of Hope Loop and, uh, four oh-one Rayford Road. Couple of photos of the property. Uh, this is the property in question, would be right here. Uh, there's already some development, a kidney center, uh, on the portion of the property that was rezoned a few, a couple of years ago. And then this is looking from the kidney center back down toward Rayford Road. Uh, just looking at, uh, some of the surrounding area, you have that kidney center to the north, to the south, uh, again is Rayford Road, to the west is undeveloped area, this limited commercial as well. Uh, I mean, sorry, to the west is actually going into Hope County, and to the east is , uh, area undeveloped, this zoned LC as well. Uh, the zoning commi- uh, commission and the professional planning staff do recommend approval of the LC, and that's based on, uh, that this implements policies adopted in the future land use plan and the policies found in the U D O. Future land use plan, uh, calls for neighborhood mixed use on this property, uh, that the uses permitted and the proposed change in zoning district classification and standards to the, those uses, uh, would be appropriate in the immediate area of land being reclassified due to existing zoning and uses, and there to no other factors that substantially affect public health, safety, morals, or general welfare. Um, if you have any questions, the staff, I'd ask, do you would hold those till after the public hearing? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Uh, so with that, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. We have, uh, two speakers in favor for this item. Our first speaker is Mr. Palmer Williams. It's not you. Our second speaker is Ms. Lori Epler.
Evening, Ms. Epler.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for hearing our case tonight. Um, Mr. Williams and his family started this development many years ago, and they were under the impression at the time that because of the topo going from the previously rezoned property down to Rayford Road, it's quite a steep climb there. And they were not sure that they could get a larger building site there than what we had rezoned before. They now have prospective tenants, several of them have come to them through the past couple of years, and wanted, needed larger sites. So it would be nice if we could expand that site. They are willing to cooperate and hauling in field to, to make that site more buildable and get their site closer to Rayford Road for the frontage that they would require. But it just, after the kidney center went in, it's become evident to these property owners that they need a larger building site there on that corner, especially with the limited, um, access to Hope Lu- Hope Loop Road that they have. A larger site's gonna be more marketable to them. They've just not been able to get a solid contract on that property. Do you have any questions? I'll be more than happy to answer them, and, um, we appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Epler. Uh, council, any, any questions? I don't see any. So with that, we'll close the public hearing. All right, Councilmember Hondros.
Mr. Mayor.
You had a... Uh, yeah, so Councilmember Ingram, I know you had, had talked previously, uh, you had something. I'll come to you, Councilmember Hondros, into it.
He needs to close the public hearing.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, okay, sir.
Yeah. All right, Councilmember Ingram.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, after, uh, speaking with Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, um, it was asked that we take no action, um, and table this until, uh, uh, for a future meeting.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Hondros, I saw, uh, you and Councilmember Dawkins, um, both had pressed that. Uh, I do know, speaking with Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, she did want to have a public hearing because there were people here, but, uh, uh, just, I told her that, based on the conversation we had, that this would be, uh, tabled until her return, uh, anticipated the next meeting.
Yeah, I was making a motion to approve. Uh, I will amend the motion to, uh, close the public hearing and, um, delay the motion to a future meeting next month, when Councilmember... Do we have a date for the next, is it, what's the second?
Well, I, I mean, we could put it on the next, next cal- uh, scheduled meeting, uh, and then I guess if there's a change, then...
Point of order. The, the, the public hearing has already been closed, so you can kind of, you can remove that from your, your motion, and I'll second the motion.
Okay, so the motion to put it on our next regularly scheduled city council meeting?
Gotta be a motion to table it to the next scheduled council meeting.
For action.
If that's acceptable. Uh, Councilmember Ingram, was that acceptable?
Yes, sir.
All right. So the motion by Councilmember Hondros, seconded by Councilmember Ingram. Discussion on that motion. All right, seeing, uh, Councilmember Benevente?
Yeah, I did. I did have him. I'm not sure, Mayor Colvin, if yourself or Councilmember Ingram, can we get any understanding of why we need to table this? Only because I understand that the work that needs to be done for this project, you know, is certainly gonna be impacted by the delay, uh, and I'm willing to ha- to support the delay, but I just want to understand why.
Well, the conversation that I, that I had, I knew, if, if you recall, at our last meeting, she asked these two items to go to a public hearing to give constituents an opportunity to speak. There were some questions that she had specifically related to that with Alpha Academy, which I think have or working through the answers to. And so, speaking to her earlier today, she did ask, uh, as these items would be considered, if she didn't make the meeting, that, uh, it could be moved to the, to the subsequent meeting. And so I, I, I think that whatever the issues were, you know, we typically try to, uh, defer to the, to whoever's district because they have a better sense of concerns, but, uh, does that help answer your question?
In part. I mean, with regards to that academy, do we want to ask, um, our speaker about that at all?
Well, I don't know exactly what her concern was about it. I know it was related to the, to the school.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. All right. Council, any other questions on the motion on the floor? Councilmember Hondros and Ingram? Madam Clerk, is that everyone? All right. Motion carries. All right. Thank you. Item nine point zero-three, uh, conditional rezoning of single family. Mr. Harmon?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Uh, again, this is P twenty-two thirty-six. Uh, this is a request, uh, from applicant, uh, Jonathan Charleston, for the owner, uh, Alternative Investment Holdings, to do a conditional rezoning, uh, from single-family six residential to mixed residential five conditional zoning. Property is located at seven zero zero nine Field Yaw Road. Uh, it's a little over fifteen acres. This is in Councilman Harris' district. And, uh, during the zoning commission meeting, originally, uh, it, this was conditioned to a hundred and sixty units, but during that meeting, uh, the applicant reduced that to a hundred and twenty-five, and so that's what the zoning commission's recommendation is based on, is that hundred and twenty-five unit number. Uh, just to give you an idea of where the property is located, uh, Field Yaw Road here, just to the north, uh, here is Fort Bragg, uh, is the boundary for Fort Bragg. Yadkin Road, intersection with Field Yaw, uh, is just over here. And then just barely off the western side of the map, um, is the intersection of Field Yaw and Raleigh Roads. Um, so again, we've got a fifteen-acre piece of property. For those who are, have been on council for a while, this is a very familiar piece of property. Uh, uh, during my fourteen years here, this is the fourth time that this has come up for rezoning. Uh, there's information in your packet about that. Uh, the first two were conditional rezonings that were turned down. Uh, the last one, a couple of years ago, was a straight rezoning to MR five. Uh, it was not completely turned down. City council rezoned the property to single-family residential six, and now, uh, new owners coming in and trying to get MR five, uh, on the property once again with some conditions. Again, just, uh, little layout, mainly surrounded by SF ten property. There is, uh, some MR five here just to the north and east, another apartment complex. Uh, this property and an apartment complex to the south of it are both zoned, the SF six. Our land use plan calls for medium-density residential on this particular property. And just a few photos of, uh, this is the property itself, uh, in front of the, or on the other side of the Jeep crossing the road there, and then just, uh, some of the surrounding area. Uh, you've got to the north, just more single-family residential, to the south, that apartment complex I mentioned, uh, to the east and west, uh, just views of how Field Yaw Road, uh, looks going in both of those directions. Uh, this particular project has been the TRC, uh, it has done a preliminary review. Um, some of the same, uh, traffic concerns, issues that have been raised in the past have been raised this time as well. Uh, the T I A that was put together originally for this project does call for, uh, turn lanes in both, uh, in both directions, north and south, or I mean, east and west, uh, along this ro- along Field Yaw Road. Uh, and the owner applicant, uh, will be able to tell you any changes in those conditions, uh, with their talks with, currently with DOT. Um, Mr. Mayor, that's all we have... Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, this is, uh, kind of the basic layout so far, uh, site plan that went to TRC. Of the fifteen acres, this area over here would be left as, uh, open space, uh, all the way down through here. So there's a sizable buffer on the western side of the property. Just some elevations of what the developer is looking to do on the property. And then, the zoning commission, again, has recommended approval with that change to 125 units, based on the future land use plan, calling for a density of, calling for medium-density residential, and this applicant amending their conditions to no more than 125 units, that the uses permitted in the change in district classification and standards that apply to those uses. We feel would be appropriate in the immediate area for the land being reclassified due to the location of the property and the surrounding uses, and that there were no other factors that substantially affect public health, safety, morals, general welfare. Mr. Mayor, if you would hold any questions of staff until after you hold the public hearing, that would be appreciated.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, with that, we will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. We have three speakers for this item. The first two speakers are in favor. First speaker, Mr. Jonathan Charleston.
Good evening, Mr. Charleston.
Here in council. Mr. Collins is going to waive his time so that I could have the entire amount of time. Is that correct? And then, we probably will reserve the final five minutes before rebuttal. If that's okay, Mr. Mayor? For the record, my name is Jonathan Charleston. My address is 201 Hay Street, Suite 2000 Fayetteville. As the council knows, there is about a 20,000-unit shortage of housing in our community. There's no question that there is a shortage of affordable housing. I'm here tonight on behalf of Alternative Investment Holdings and its principal, Darren Collins, who are the owners of the property located at 709, 7,009 Field Yaw Road. As I state frequently, all property owners seek the highest and best use of their property. And in this case, my clients are no different. The property owner requested the city council grant a conditional rezoning from SF6 to mixed-residential five conditional zoning for no more than 125 units. Now, I know most of the information that council has received was listed at 160 units. We're at 125 units, which is 35 units less than what's set forth in the materials, including the city council action memo. Now, what, what I will say very briefly is that this, this case has been before city council a number of times, not with this particular owner. But what I will say is that land use restrictions, in, in many instances, have made it more difficult for developers to find sites within the city. It's not only a housing shortage, it is a real property shortage, a dirt shortage pursuant to which you can build housing on. So, as stated, a shortage of development sites and the surging land prices, along with the high construction costs, meaning developers haven't been able to build enough housing to keep up with the demand in our community. So, it is also important to point out that while the staff report suggested the owner seeks conditional zoning for the 125 acres, I mean, 160 acres for which they believe was not appropriate for the site. Again, I reiterate that it is 125 units per acre that we seek. Now, this site is a 15.14-acre site, which, if we did the numbers, would calculate to approximately eight units per site on the, which, on the, on the site, which, in my opinion, and based on the research we've done, would not create an undue burden on this particular location at all. There would be no, none of the indicators that would be adverse burdens on the site. As you know, to develop this site would require DOT participation to develop the roadway, which would, which would impact the traffic. In addition, the, the city stormwater plan and the UDO would guide development of that site. So, what I would say to you, although the future land use plan calls for medium-density, medium to low-density at this site, the land use plan is nothing more than a recommendation to council. It's a guidance, it doesn't bind council for one thing or another. So, where we are today, ladies and gentlemen, is that the proposed development that's before you now, the conditioned use, is 35 fewer units than what was requested in the zoning application, which received a unanimous recommendation, I believe, from the zoning commission. Based on the foregoing, we respectfully request approval of the applicant's application for the zoning that's been set forth before you. And I'll reserve the balance of my time for rebuttal.
All right, noted time is at 10 minutes, 40 seconds remain. All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. William Fisher in opposition.
Good evening, sir.
My name is William Fisher. I live on Dandridge Drive, which is more or less adjacent to the area. Lived there since 1977, so we've seen a lot happen around the area. Our main concern was the change for 160 units, but since that's been downgraded to 125, we, we, we don't disagree.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. All right, Mr. Charleston, doesn't look like there's a whole lot to rebut there, so you good for the rest of your time?
I have two minutes left.
All right, all right. With that, Madam Clerk, we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Hare.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I move to approve, I would like to say to the public and to those of you around the diocese this evening that a couple of weeks ago, we did have the developer and his representative, Mr. Charleston, at our meeting. I think we had about 45, maybe 50 people somewhat at the meeting, and we had this great discussion about this item, big discussion about it. And it was supported that we would move forward. And I move to approve the conditional zoning to MR-5 slash CZ with the revised condition, no more than 125 units that have been recommended.
Thank you. That's the motion by Councilmember Hare, as stated, seconded by Councilmember Ingram. Any further discussion on the motion to approve with those conditions? All right, council, look to you, see if these iPads will do it. Look to you for your votes. All right, motion carries 9-0. Thank you all. Item 9.04, text amendment, Article 30, unified development ordinance.
All right, good evening again, Mayor and council. Again, my name is Heather Eckhart, and I'm a planner, too. Tonight's text amendment is regarding feather flags. As many of members of council know, this was an item requested by council. Myself and my coworker, Demetrius Mutos, worked together to compile information from sister cities, as well as other cities within the state, to draft together some amendments to allow feather flags within the city. This will provide an avenue for business owners and institutions to lawfully display feather flags in an aesthetically pleasing manner. The first amendment will be to the prohibited signs section regarding motion signs, and we're simply adding in an exemption, exemption for feather flags. The majority of the text is pertaining to the flags themselves. So, they will be permitted one flag per 50 feet of lot frontage up to a maximum of four flags per parcel, with a 50-foot separation between each flag, a maximum width of the flag of three feet, and a maximum height of 10 feet. The flag should be mounted into the ground, flat, or I'm sorry, feet, and legs will not be permitted. And they shall not be mounted to any other structure. And when they become torn, damaged, or otherwise in disrepair, they need to be removed. And as with any signs in the city, they cannot be located within the right-of-way or any public utility easement. Additionally, we have listed them as a prohibited type of sign within the historic overlay, which is in keeping with the design standards that are coming up for review. You can see, we've also added a definition for feather flags, as we don't currently have one. Example here of some properties that have feather flags, how they are displayed currently, and how some do not get removed when they probably should. This item was presented to the planning commission twice. They did send it forward with a recommendation of approval as drafted, and that we require a one-time permit be obtained for feather flags for each parcel. We ask that you hold any questions until after the public hearing.
All right, thank you, ma'am, Heather. All right, with that, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
May we have no speakers for this item?
All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing. Do you have a, Councilmember Hare, I think has a motion to...
Yes, sir. Just shooting back to you, Mayor, you know, you and I had brought this to council, I think, last year, so it's good to see that our business owners across the city will have an opportunity to advertise their business. I would like to make a motion that the city council shall adopt all or some of the proposed text amendment for this item.
All right, is, is, thank you, Councilmember Hare, and indeed, you, I think you captured it well. Another tool for businesses to be able to, to be successful. So, it's a motion by Councilmember Hare, seconded by Councilmember Honduras. Looks like his seating is giving some problems. All right, thumbs up? Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your iPads for your vote. I don't know what's going on. All right, the motion carries 9-0. Thank you. And thank you, staff, for, for that. I know it was kind of a tedious process. All right, item 9.05, water supply watershed management.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I am pin-shitting for some staff who couldn't be here, but this is an item you've heard before at the work session. As you will recall, the PWC has asked us to update our water supply watershed management and protection plan. Some very minor corrections to align with the state's guidelines and template for this. Again, there aren't a whole lot of changes to this, but it, as everyone will recall, protecting our watershed and water supply is one of our top priorities. And we are holding a public hearing for this item, and we'll look for council's adoption if that is favorable.
Thank you, sir. All right, so with that, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
May we have no speakers for this item?
No speakers. So with that, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, entertain a motion at this time? Ma'am? Councilmember Honduras? All right, it's a motion by Councilmember Honduras to approve the updated change, seconded by Councilmember Benevente. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, go to our iPads for vote. All right, Madam Clerk, motion carries 9-0. Thank you. Item 10.01, North Carolina History Center Foundation Report and Adoption Budget Orders Amendment. Councilmember Benevente?
Actually, Mayor, we had asked...
Oh, okay. Well, I know that we're in attendance. Come on up, Mr. Haley. We're on a roll.
On a roll, I know. It's been unanimous all the way through. I'm looking forward to this.
Don't jinx it.
Thank you. I just want to give a couple of quick updates on where we've been since we last talked. As you all know, we held public forums starting in the 11th at Mount Sinai, Mount Zion Church, and we had Harry Watson, the head of our design team, Spencer Crew, who, who you all heard at our groundbreaking, was not able to be here because we did move it from the 10th to 11th. We also had the Secretary of Cultural Resources, along with a deputy secretary, who is one of our historians. Went very well. We had, the, the storyboards were up. The purpose of this was, was to give a brief outline and have the storyboards up so that citizens from the community could go out and, and give their opinion about the content as it's represented right now. We had a total of 185 people come during the 11 days. 72 of those were on the first day. And I want to thank, Councilman Dawkins was able to be there that first night. We appreciate you being there and your support. One of the things that came out of that meeting was that the secretary announced the state has settled on a new name. So I'm going to try and read this without messing it up, if you're ready. This is going to be called the North Carolina History Center on the Civil War, Emancipation, and Reconstruction. So we finally have a name from the state of North Carolina. The other thing that's happened since we last met...
Can you repeat it, please, sir? Can you repeat it, please?
Repeat that? Yes, ma'am. It is the North Carolina History Center on the Civil War, Emancipation, and Reconstruction. We've tried to come up with a really catchy axiom for that, but it's like 14 letters, so we haven't gotten one. The other thing that's happened since that point was we did go back and meet with the county, and the county honored their commitment for 7.5 million, and we thank them for that commitment. I come to you tonight asking for, for you to honor your commitment for the 6.6 towards the History Center and authorize us to work with the city manager on agreement to move forward.
All right, thank you, Mr. Haley. Looks like I have Councilmember Benevente, Councilmember Benevente?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we direct city manager to sign an agreement with the North Carolina History Center Foundation Board, requiring 6, 6.6 million dollars from the city of Fayetteville to be spent on the construction of the center, i.e. brick and mortar only. Moreover, the foundation board must agree city council will have a representative up to their board, and later, North Carolina History Center Advisory Board or council thereafter. Additionally, exhibits displayed at the History Center will present the true history of this period, rather than mythology of the lost cause narratives. If these stipulations are agreed to in writing by the chairman or president of the foundation board on their behalf, then the city manager will bring a budget ordinance amendment to the city council on Monday, November 14th, to appropriate 3.3 million dollars. Upon completion of the annual comprehensive financial reports, the city manager will bring a budget ordinance amendment to the city council to appropriate the remaining 3.3 million of funding for this project, so long as the appropriation does not cause unassigned fund balance percentage to fall below the council's established policy of 10%.
All right, this is a motion by Councilmember Benevente, is there a second? Seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins. Discussion on the motion. Councilmember Hare, and then Ingram.
Thank you, Mayor. Just still wanted to make sure that it's echoed, and we have discussed this over the, over the years, and we also discussed it tonight in our earlier meeting, that we want to continue to hold on, and I don't know how we 100% make that a 100% item, a solution, that as, when the MOU is done, the memorandum of understanding is done, how far past that particular document can we hold the concerns that have been always, like what goes into the museum? What does not go into the museum? what goes into the museum, what does not go into the museum? Is the community, the black community, and the language, for example, that's in the, how long before that runs out, or if it ever runs out? And I know I'm going to get a, someone is going to explain the perpetuity out loud tonight, but also that has always been concerns of members of the public, which is some of the reason why it has kind of drug on as far as it is. And it's legitimate concerns. It's very, very legitimate concern. So just wanted to state that I know we've come a long ways to get to where we are tonight. Looks like we might be going forward this evening, but those are the type of concerns that echo some of the community that I've represented, that I've brought forward at least the last two or three years. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Councilmember here. Well, I think before I go to Councilmember Ingram, I certainly agree with a lot of the comments that Councilmember here made, which is why I think we, you know, asked council to consider, and we did, to have some type of agreement. And Councilmember here, I guess to answer your question, I understand that these are conditions before money is released or distributed, and that'll all be captured in the agreement that the manager brings back to us, I think, in order to make sure requirements are met. So I agree with you, there's a lot of concern and angst about the content. I think in his motion, he captured a lot of those concerns, so hopefully, Councilmember Benevente, in this motion, is there a requirement, or manager, how's the process look once you work with them and get an agreement? Do you bring that back to the council to read over?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So that's the best I know how to answer any other comments or questions to his question, Mr. Manager, or others?
Well, since the project started, and I think it was that I got involved in two thousand and sixteen, the people on the foundation board have been very consistent in their statements. Everything that the council and the community have asked, including the most recent community meetings, have been consistent. As you know, we had a variety of pre, of post-Civil War statues in the community that in many people's minds glorified. The Civil War, they were not pre, they were post, and there was an opportunity for those statues and others around the state to be relocated, and people actually asked that they be relocated to what was going to be this center. And the board and the foundation, who again are here, and they've told us this as well in the past, were very clear that that was not what this museum was about, not what they were about, and that the answer was no. We also learned at a recent meeting, which again is consistent with what they've told us, that the, and it's in your packet as well, that the goal is to develop this locally with statewide support, and ultimately to have the state take this over as a facility and governed by the state. They are, would be managed and have oversight by a statewide board that focuses on historic issues. And just looking at the list of people who are involved, Mr. Here, and Councilmember here, you said it very well, that it is a real concern of a lot of people in the community. And I think that to the extent that we know the folks who are local, who have been working on this for many, many years, to the extent we have met with the folks at the state level, the mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and others, and he's actually been here, Secretary of the Department of Cultural Affairs, and more importantly, we know the city council. And I know that everything that goes along with this moving forward, if the council approves the agreement and releases the money, that we're going to be watching very closely as a staff, and you will be as well as a community. And we're going to hold them to this, but to the extent that we're going to, it's in the motion, it'll be written in the document, we know the people who are involved. I think that's where we are, but your point, as you said, it is a point of community concern. I think we've done all we can to address it at this point, though.
All right, Councilmember... Councilmember Ingram, I'll come to you. Councilmember Benevente, and then Thompson. Ingram, Benevente, Thompson.
Thank you. So I have two different sets of questions. I'm going to ask first that Mr. Mack, Mack Healy, if you could come up, please. So about a month ago, I think, you and I had a very, very good discussion at the arsenal. I came and we had, we had a very open dialogue. I was not able to make the community meetings as I was traveling, based on how, based off of what I, and I also will say, I was somewhat held hostage out of Staples, getting some education as well, and being persuaded, but based off of the conversation that you and I had directly at the arsenal, I left with a very, very different perspective, but this is me as a person who just appreciates history. And we talked about my grandmother, we talked about me growing up in that area, and we talked about moving forward and what that meant to Fayetteville and how that looked. I would like to know, because I don't think you mentioned it, what was the feedback from the community members that attended? What did you hear?
We actually have, Lisa or Sherri, if you'd like to answer that maybe, because we've got a couple people who met with an awful lot of them. Either one, both? Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine, but as they come up, I want to make it very clear, don't just give us the good, give us, give us the truth of what you heard. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sherri Todd Multer. I've worked for the foundation since two thousand and sixteen. First, I was to gather information about the descendants from the one thirty-fifth U.S. colored troops, and then I started working with one hundred stories from one hundred counties project, and so far, we've gathered close to a thousand of those. One of the, one of the main feedbacks that we got was to remember how to explain sharecropping. That was one of the ones that was hit on several times in the reconstruction phase. We always intended to discuss it, but this particular person wanted to make sure that we covered the good, the bad, and then all of the aspects that would prevent the fifty-fifty distribution from being actually fair, and then how, how the actual laws in place would stop them, like sundowntown kind of stuff. We were also reminded to use capital B and black, because in some of the places, it was, it was lowercase b, yeah. And part of that was the rush, but there's no excuse for that. We should have caught it, and we didn't, so we just need to be more careful about such things. And I'm trying to remember, oh, dismal swamp was something that was brought up, which of course will be something that is discussed in antebellum emancipation and reconstruction, I would imagine. So there were, there were positive responses, but these were the main ones that stuck out to me that were just gentle reminders to not forget these other aspects of the story. You want to go ahead?
Yeah. So one person was concerned about, like, parking. They didn't want any of the historic arsenal grounds to be used for that, and so they were concerned about parking and asking us to keep that in check, commenting on that. Had a couple of retired Cumberland County schoolteachers who were very thankful for it because they weren't able to do justice for this area in their schoolrooms. One lady even told me I had to write my own curriculum because there wasn't one for it for the time period. As Sherri mentioned, Dr. Turner went through, made several good comments, assuring us that use a capital B for black and not the slower case, and that was good because that had come up in some of the exhibit discussions. Let's see, what else? Trying to go through all the boards. Really sorry that I didn't see Mr. Dawkins. I saw you last Tuesday, and I almost brought them with me because they're at my house, and would have had some comments on that. One, let's see.
I do want to add while she's thinking about something. We did manage to get five stories definitely, and one very kind lady actually came prepared with one to hand to me, which was fantastic, and then later stopped by at the office, a Colberth House, and brought documents and pictures and wonderful things that I'm working on transcribing. So we actually have an indenture of land between Duncan McRae and Daniel Bugston that I'm working on now. And then another gentleman who apparently was very worried about what we were doing and who we were, after looking at all the posters, sat down with me for about forty minutes and gave me information regarding two of his ancestors for us to work on for him. So there were some very positive aspects as well as learning opportunities for us, too.
Yeah, thank you. And so you finally tapped on something that I was looking for, which was, I can't think of his name, but he's right back there.
Kobe.
Kobe, yes. We sat down and we looked at the stories that were being submitted, a great number of stories, and to that tune, I will support this because I've recognized that you do have people who want their story to be shared. In addition to, I also support the Black Voices Museum, and I recognize that there will people who want, there will be people who want their story to be shared in that light as well, but because we have a community that is just sending their stories to be shared and trusting you, I just would ask that you take... Be accountable to these stories. Be accountable. And then, Ms., thank you, and Assistant City Manager Olivera, could you come up, please?
I just wanted to ask, I'll tell you one more thing. As you mentioned, someone noticed that the word carpetbagger was used to describe a man named Albiantorgi, and the person pointed out to me, that's a derogatory term, and we don't need to perpetuate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am. I was an individual.
Mr. Cardona. Mr. Cardona. Mr. Cardona, hold on one sec. Mr. Cardona. Mr. Cardona, you're going to be asked to leave if you don't settle down, period. That was the foundation board answering questions. It was different. Well, you have to sign, you have to sign up to speak through the process, sir. Yes, all right. All right, Mr. Cardona, have a good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So we talked a little bit earlier about what this may or may not do to our fund balance. So can you express to me where we are with this six point six in our fund balance?
I can. So our current fund balance percentage is estimated at twelve point nine seven percent. So if council takes action to appropriate the entire six point six million at one time in the current fiscal year, right now, based on our estimates, because we don't have final fund balance numbers yet, that would put the fund balance percentage at nine point four one percent. Council does have a policy that the fund balance percentage will be at ten percent or above with a goal of twelve percent.
So our fund balance, will we good if we split it?
If you do the three point three that is in Councilmember Benevente's motion, that would put the estimated fund balance at eleven point two percent. So you would be right in between your policy and your goal.
Yeah, so, and that is the part I'm struggling with, especially in terms of being good stewards of the city. Has the organization made it clear that they have to have a certain amount by a certain date?
I have not spoken directly with the organization, so I don't have that information, and I apologize, but we could certainly stagger payments at council's discretion.
So even less than the three point three that is being proposed?
We could appropriate any amount council chose. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Councilmember Thompson, and then Benevente. Benevente, you had a motion or you had a question?
I was just going to make a comment, sir.
All right, I'll come back to you. Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mack, can you and Ms. Bryant come up here, please? How are you, Ms. Bryant?
How are you?
I just wanted you to stand before council, and the reason being is, I want to make myself perfectly clear. I have always approved this project, but I wanted to make sure we did it right, and we did it right the first time. I'm sure that you have instilled confidence in all these board members and council members up here on what your objective is. My biggest concern is what will happen ten, fifteen years from now, and that's where the stipulations come in. We probably won't be here, and you probably won't be here either.
I'm going to try.
I know you're going to try, Ms. Bryant. I know you are. That's why I wanted to make sure the stipulation was guaranteed that we will have, that we will have somebody on the advisory board. Now, the question came as to, let me first back up some. Once it's done, it's going to be turned over to the state.
Correct.
We can only hold the foundation accountable. I wanted you to be certain that what we put in this MOA, that the foundation will adhere to. That's all I wanted.
I can guarantee you that once it's worked out, there's no question. We will do what we are supposed to do.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bryant. And Mr. Mack?
You don't really want me to follow her, do you?
No, I don't. I really don't. When does the funds need to be appropriated? When are you going to use the funds? Because we don't want to give you the funds and let them sit in the bank and draw interest, and you're not using them at the right time. So when are you going to be using the funds? So we can appropriately know how to give you the funds.
You've put a stipulation that this has to be used for brick and mortar. So what I can, when I work with the city manager, we could talk about when we begin to do brick and mortar. The next stage on this is to go to construction documents and things like that. So that's really kind of moving the ball forward. So we can get with him, and we'll get with our architects and talk about that.
So I guess the answer is you don't need all five point, or six point five at one time?
Well, if I could ask for it, yeah, I want it all tomorrow, sure. But yeah, no, no, we'll be glad to work with him on this process, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mack.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Thompson. Councilmember Benevente?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember here said it already, and I think it bears repeating as we kind of close out this discussion. People are right to be skeptical on issues of Civil War history because for over a hundred and fifty years, we've been getting it wrong. We've been elevating myths. I remember being taught in school about this war of northern aggression, and it wasn't until college that I learned the true history. And so I'm excited by all the partners that are included. I understand that there's still, you know, call for us to be vigilant throughout this entire process, and I know that we will be, but the most important aspect of this History Center is going to be the future that we're teaching our young people. You heard about the Cumberland County schoolteachers, who already are under-resourced. We're getting ready to bring tens of millions of dollars from the state into our community to better educate our students. Our tier-one county is going to get tens of million dollars to better educate our students. So any concern with being good stewards of our funds ought to recall that this is a great investment from the state into our community, and we should look forward to all of the benefits it's going to bring our young people as they learn the true history, as they begin to engage with all of these stories that honestly still impact politics today. So when we think about the reconstruction era and how it turned into redlining, when we think about the way in which law enforcement still criminalizes poverty, we see the direct line from this era into today, and we can't solve those problems today if we don't truly understand the history of this time period. So for a long time, I know a lot of folks just didn't look at it. They wanted to turn away from it because rightfully, it was told in a one way that only... because rightfully, it was told in a one way that only glorified one side. So I'm looking forward to this history center because finally, for the first time in the history of this nation, uh, I'm glad that Fayetteville's on the cutting edge of telling the true history for the first time.
Thank you, sir. Alright, so, go back now to the Benevente Dawkins' motion. We've had adequate discussion and questions. Alright, council, I'll look to you for your votes.
Want you coming back to me?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Councilmember, yes, Councilmember Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mayor. And, and just once again, like I said, I don't want to break this string, I done pulled it so thin. But because I have lived these short years and have had history and know a little of our history in America, uh, and all the comments that I receive is why I'm speaking the way that I have spoken because of those that have spoken to me. Not, not just me, but from them. So let me make sure that I'm understanding the motion. The motion really is to make sure that the stipulations are agreed upon in writing first. And then the city manager will bring all of those stipulations or the contract or the memorandum of understanding back to us. Then, there will be an appropriation of funding. So what we're going to receive back is, uh, uh, a, a understanding from the MOU first in writing.
So, so what I...
We'll move forward.
From, from a process, was that, was that your understanding, Mr. Hewitt? Now, I know that tonight, they had a budget ordinance on here, which would have caused the money, according to those stipulations, 3.3 or whatever was specified.
But I thought he said...
To be appropriated.
That's November the 14th.
Right, okay.
So what you will see on November 14th, unless there are any additional stipulations, will be basically in the motion, which was the name, um, representation on the board, no lost cause, and for brick and mortar only. Um, and it will also have with it, um, the appropriate budget action to send the money. Unless there, and, and that'll be that. But what they're, what we, what you're approving tonight is that you are going, your intent is to fund 6.6 million dollars for this center. And we're just going to bring you back the agreement that's going to actually put that in motion on November 14th.
And then on November the 14th, there's another vote?
There is another vote.
Okay, thank you.
And what will that vote be on November 14th?
Will be to review and approve the MOU.
Thank you.
But again, those elements that are in it, unless there's something that's different, um, your action tonight, um, is really what I think the foundation and others are looking for if there's consensus of council, majority of council on this vote to do that.
So we kind of doing this backwards? We, we, we give the money before MOU?
No, so I think this is just direction to execute and to draft the MOU and the budget ordinance and to bring it back on the 14th for, uh, formal action and adoption, is that right?
That is the motion that's in front of you at the moment. Yes.
Alright, so council, that's the clarification. Uh, the motion is stated, um, for tonight. You've read it, it's in red, uh, on the dais. So we, we've had discussion, look to you for your votes on the iPad. I was in favor of allowing the, uh, city manager to execute, uh, in accordance to the motion.
Councilmember?
Sir?
Councilmember Benevente had, um, clarifying piece.
If we're saying we want three things, and they agree to those three things, there's nothing really else to vote on. So today, if Mayor, uh, excuse me, if, if City Manager Hewitt comes back and says they did those three things, it, we don't need to do another vote on this, we're doing it now. So my very specific language was for an adoption of a budget ordinance amendment. So if we're saying yes today, as long as they get those three things, we're good to go. We don't need to vote again.
Alright, so, that's... Yeah, yeah, we need to call for the vote. I, I, I thought I read it, that the budget ordinance was in this request here, but... Alright, so, Mr. Benevente, please reread your motion, then we'll call for the vote. Question's been called.
I move that we direct the city manager to sign an agreement with the North Carolina History Center Foundation Board requiring 6.6 million American dollars from the city of Fayetteville to be spent on the construction of the center, i.e. brick and mortar only. Moreover, the foundation must agree, city council will have a representative to their board, and later to the NC History Center Advisory Board or council thereafter. Additionally, exhibits displayed at the history center will present the true history of this period rather than the mythology of the lost cause narratives. If these stipulations are agreed to in writing by the chairman or president of the foundation board on their behalf, then the city manager will bring a budget ordinance amendment... The city manager will bring a budget, uh, ordinance amendment to the city council on Monday, November 14th to appropriate the 3.5 million. Upon completion of the annual comprehensive reports, the city manager will bring a budget ordinance amendment to the city council to appropriate the remaining 3.3 million of funding for this project, so long as the appropriation does not cause the unassigned fund balance percentage to fall below the council's established policy of 10%.
Which was a stated, did state about a budget ordinance coming on November 14th? I heard that, that was in the motion. Uh, so the second was by Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins. Council, let's vote. Alright, iPads. Jennifer, iPads up? I don't have a option to vote. Alright, let's, let's do it by hand, then.
Hold on, hold on.
Alright, there we go. Alright, just, alright. Alright. Alright.
Great job, guys.
Motion carries. Alright, uh, council, just before we, uh, leave, item 11.01, street name, Filter Plant. It was a request that came in by Federal State University to, uh, consider changing the name. I know this is a multi-step process. Uh, we'll go to the county, I know we discussed it, and there were some concerns, just to make sure that, uh, businesses or others in the area that had to make amendments have opportunity to have a public hearing, which, uh, I think they explained that process to us. Need to ask tonight, since this is under as administrative report, uh, there's consensus to give the manager, um, consensus to forward that to the county to begin the process, so...
Mr. Mayor, I had a question before, and I'm also prepared to make the motion. In the letter from Chancellor Allison, it's, it specifically asks for Bronco Village Drive. In the legislative text, it says Bronco Village Way. And so I think we need to make sure that the name of what is being correct is updated. So the legislative text needs to be reworded to say Bronco Village Drive.
Yeah, it should be per the letter, yes.
It, it's not. So what I'm saying is, we need to have that updated.
Okay, y'all caught that before it goes to the county?
Okay, and so if there are no further, um, questions, I'm prepared to make the consensus.
Motion's yours, ma'am.
Okay, um, after staff, I, I move that, once staff updates the legislative, uh, text to reflect the verbiage of Bronco Village Drive, that we, uh, approve the, for the city manager to submit the application and begin the process for the name change to the county.
Alright, motion by Councilmember Ingram. There's seconds. Second by Councilmember Jensen. Uh, discussion, Councilmember Hare.
Discussion. It just, sir, just wanted, 100% also make sure, because you, uh, what you just stated, and, and even though we did re, receive the information in our pre-meeting, the business owners and the residents will have an opportunity to give their, uh...
Input.
Input on this item before anything is done, correct?
Yeah, public hearings required, I think Ms. Beckton told us. But yes.
Yes, I just wanted to let it be put there in the, in the record.
And we, we don't set that public hearing today, right? We wait till we get the approval, okay, thank you.
Alright, alright. Uh, motion on four by Councilmember Ingram, second by Jensen. Alright, council, look to you for your votes. Course mine is not, okay, there we go. Alright. Yeah, it's cut out now.
Mayor Colvin? Point of order, or point of personal privilege before we...
Yes, sir. Oh, yes, yes, I got you. Alright, council, show of hands, uh, uh, those in favor? Alright. Adam Cook, it's unanimous.
No, it's not, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, those, those, uh, opposed? Councilmember Hare, alright, alright. Um, motion carries eight, the one. Um, Councilmember Benevente, real quick?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a point of personal privilege, uh, we, we didn't do this right at the announcements when I, uh, when I should have mentioned, made mention. Uh, tonight is Diwali, uh, so the festival of lights is also known. Uh, is meant to celebrate victory of light over darkness. It's celebrated by over a billion people across the planet. Uh, so I wanted to make sure I wished everyone, on behalf of city council, happy Diwali tonight.
Alright, thank you, very important. Thank you, sir. Alright, motion adjourned. Have a good evening.